And starting the recording.
Okay, we're ready to go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Peterborough Select Board meeting for Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. I'm Tyler Ward. I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. With me is Karen Hatcher, fellow Select Board member, and Bill Taylor, another fellow Select Board member. We have Deputy Town Administrator Nicole McStay. We have Town Administrator Rodney Bartlett, and we'll hear from Chief Walker this evening. So tonight, we'll hear from some members of our Subcommittee of the Economic Development Authority regarding affordable housing proposal they've pulled together. Hope Taylor and Peter LaRoche will join us. And then Chief Walker will give us an update on COVID-19. We're all familiar with the process there. But he's back to tell us some more. And then there's a great initiative in town collaborating with Manana Community Hospital for a Mask Up campaign. We'll have some new business. 2020 Assessment to Sales Ratio and Proposal for Partial Statistical Update. If everybody remembers, back in 2018, we had a full revaluation of the town, which brought our levels of assessed values closer to sales values, I believe we'll discuss. And Town Administration has some suggestions on where we should move with that.
Tyler, hang on a second. Ally's telling me that she's not seeing this on Facebook.
I see it.
One moment.
Got three other people watching it as well.
I just got a text that we can't find it on the Facebook page.
Nicole, you're streaming it as Nicole.
Oh, that's why. I'm sorry. Let me...
Let's start over.
That explains it. Hold on.
Okay.
There we go. Let me try again. There it is.
It was just practice, anyway.
It was. You think I have this down by now? There's one little dropdown menu that I obviously just missed. There we go.
You putting that in her file, Rodney?
All right. Now let's try that again.
Yep.
Good.
Says on my screen.
All right. Apologies for that. We had a little technical difficulties. We are streaming live on Facebook this evening. And if you're seeing us anywhere else.
Wait, hold on.
Yeah. Lost it?
Although there is that delay, right?
There is a delay.
Look, I don't dare look at it anymore.
Although there is that delay, right?
I can hear me talking in somebody's background.
Yeah.
I can see it.
Oh, wait. I'm looking at their own page.
All right.
It's not me that told you to stop. It's Ally.
And are we ready now?
Do you think so, Ally? Hold on.
We do want to make, since this is the only avenue for people to see us, we do want to make sure it is live.
It appears to be running. I mean, I can see it.
Yeah. Yep. I can see me in the corner office on here. Yeah, it's working, right, Ally?
All right. Great.
Now we're live. Take care.
So clearly, if you're seeing us now, you've seen that we've had some tough technical difficulties. We are not available on Comcast Channel 22 or Ustream this evening, so you get to miss it there. It will be archived, though, however, and viewable at a later time. Welcome to the Peterborough Select Board meeting for Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. I'm Tyler Ward. I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. Along with me are fellow Select Board members Karen Hatcher and Bill Taylor. We also have Town Administrator Rodney Bartlett, Deputy Town Administrator Nicole McStay, and Chief Walker is here with us. This evening's agenda, we'll hear from Hope Taylor and Peter LaRoche from the Affordable Housing Subcommittee of the Economic Development Authority with a proposal for some building in town or an idea regarding building in the area. Chief Walker is here to update us on COVID-19. There are some new, there's a new avenue with which to find information. And we'll discuss the partnership with Manana Community Hospital and the Mask Up campaign that is in full effect. Our new business this evening will discuss 2020 Assessments to Sales Ratio and Proposal for Partial Statistical Update. If everyone recalls, back in 2018, we had a town revaluation, which adjusted assessed values of properties to closer to sales prices. And we'll see what's happened in the market since then and how COVID-19 has affected sales, or if it hasn't. We have minutes to approve from June 23rd, 2020. And we also have some other business to discuss regarding the state revolving fund and funds for the Stone, not Stone Cold, Steve Austin, the Cold Stone Springs Water Facility. And there you have it. So, ready to go?
Hope will be sitting in that chair over there.
All right. Welcome, Hope.
About the cabin.
I don't know how much of this, if I were to put it down, they could see.
They can't see any of it.
Okay. Um, this idea needs help from the town. It is a two-pronged idea. It's for affordable housing that would be sustainable. In other words, not using any government subsidies of any sort. The idea is to use eight towns already owned land that's sitting idle. And once it's done, then the town would start getting taxes on this. We started calling them Hummel Homes. That name can be changed if we go very far. Anyway, the other prong is the idea that it would be built by local contractors and tradespeople. And they would put in their time for nothing and end up owning an asset at the end. So these small contractors or business people, particularly contractors, would be dangerous work. You know, if they got hurt, they would have an asset that they would own ongoing. So we started out with a very simple building. And then we decided that we needed to get an architect who brought up something so that we could then have somebody like Peter price it. So the first thing we did, we used the idea of Evans Flats, because there was already a big study done on that with the idea of doing housing down there. And this was, it's old, but it's... But it was something that people were interested in doing. So Sharon Mahan and I went down and surveyed it to make sure that the wetlands were, you know, weren't encroaching and that there would be room to do this. So the next thing that we did, once we have that, so I've got, you know, I've got a plan that's that big. And then we went and had, so Sharon helped with, you know, didn't ask for anything in turn. We next went to John Catlin, who was working on the townhouse here. And he did some drawings of 16 units in four buildings that are quite small. So they're under 625 square feet, but they have two bedrooms each. And they fit on the part of the land that's left that doesn't run into the wetland buffer zone or anything like that. So then we gave those plans to Peter LaRoche. And he, with Delta's help, did some pricing. And so now I will have to open up my folder and read. So we have created three separate possibilities based on what we've learned so far. One is strictly builder-owned, where we buy the materials with a bridge loan that would last a short period of time, and then the buildings would get built. And then after the bridge loan was paid off, then we would condoize them. And then everybody who wanted a unit to own one would get, you know, it would all go that. And we know we're going to need a lawyer and, you know, all that. But anyway, so the pricing, if it was materials only and the labor is all given, sweat equity, the total price of this particular drawing that John Catlin did would end up being $850,000, which would be a unit price of $53,000. And with rental income, which is based on something that Elijah and I found out way back in the beginning of having started this small affordable housing committee, we talked to NHDB, who had come before the EDA complaining about this problem in the first place. And we asked them, what is an entry-level job able to pay in rent? And it was anywhere between 750-ish and 850-ish. So we've been fine to stay in those parameters. So that first, that number one proposal would return anybody, whether it was an investor or one of the tradespeople, 8.5% roughly. If the whole thing were built by investors and there was no sweat equity involved, the price doubles on the same drawings on that. So that would come to $1,007,000. And that's $110,000 per unit. And you'd have to charge a higher rent. All of these units, by the way, are exactly the same. There are no differentiations. You know, we started out with studios and one-bedders and two-bedders, and it was too complicated. So that would, that would net, the net on that would be 4.5%. And what I'm doing here is I'm taking the gross rents, you know, 750 or 850, whatever it is, times 12, and then cutting it in half, because we wouldn't know what the taxes would be or what the owner's expenses would be and that kind of thing. So I'm being very conservative. And then the other thing that we decided to present was, and I went up and looked at these, and this is Camelot Homes, or any any prefab modular house kits, there are all kinds of, they're everywhere. And I picked Camelot Homes. We found some that are anywhere from, you know, they run from anywhere from $38,000 each to, you know, way beyond what we want to afford. But the idea of this is, whether it's a kit or something that's all-in, it cuts down the time that it would take to build and set the whole thing up, which is good for the local tradespeople and so forth. So that would... And also, each of these ends up, you know, I put in contingencies, the hookups from the town and all that. So that one, the units would end up being 51,000 each, based on 44,000 plus hookup fees and whatever else happens to the site. And that would be a return on investment of 8.7. Now, since we started this about six months ago, or actually seven months now, we have found investors who are very interested in this idea, who are already doing housing or things like that in town. So we have two. So we might end up, if this flies, being half and half. Half and half, you know, sweat equity and half being investors who invest ahead of time. And therefore, there may not have to be a bridge loan, or it may not be as big. One of the things that I want to say before I forget is, if this is either may fly, or it's going to be in the paper tomorrow, I've been very concerned about the butter it's all along. I want to make sure that if this goes beyond this meeting, that I or somebody gets to them and, you know, talks to them. I think I better stop now. If anybody has any questions.
I do hope, but I think Tyler may have gotten popped off.
Hold on.
Is Tyler on?
Tyler is not on. He had, the power flickered and he lost his internet, so he's working on coming back up.
So Hope, I just want to, so thank you. Thanks for taking the initiative. And for, I know you have been doggedly working toward affordable housing as part of the committee with EDA. And I really appreciate it. I'm just questioning, I want to understand how, what the part of the town's piece of this is, because I know we own the property. But how is the, is it a housing trust? Is it a, is there a management piece of this where the monies get paid back through rent? And so there's a mechanism where someone's managing that?
Yes.
What are you thinking?
They would eventually, we, obviously, if, well, okay, the first, the answer to the first question is the fact that we broke this down into three possibilities. The ones that are the least expensive gives us room to negotiate with the town some sort of payment for the land, or in some way that we can go back and forth. You know, maybe we pay so much and you forgive the hookups, or, you know, something like that. And we also realized that we would have to have a lawyer pretty quickly, if this was considered a good idea. To, we would end up, it would just be investors or the tradespeople owning the units. And it would be just like any other condo association, you know, just like Governor's Square or Colonial Square. They, we would set up a committee that would be, that would run it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So the investment the town is making is the land. And maybe that gets paid for in part, maybe there's a sharing that comes back or something.
So we could, we would just, we would negotiate a price and go from there. I wasn't sure about how that would work. Bill, do you want to jump? I don't, in other words, how, what the legal things that you have to do. I mean, if we negotiate a price for that particular plan, and it's such and such, I don't know.
Yep.
Do, what do you have to do from there? Does it have to be advertised? I don't know.
Okay.
There are certainly a lot of things that would have to happen first. One of the issues is that for the town to do anything with a piece of property that it owns, you need to go through a 4114A process, which requires that the Select Board hold two public hearings. There may be other people who might be interested in putting forward a proposal for the use of that property as well. There have been some interest, there has been some interest expressed in the past, so no one's actually come forward with any plan. So, yeah, what's, what the Select Board has done in the past, most recently with the GR Hall, is put out requests for proposals before even starting the 4114A process to see what other ideas might be out there. So if the board is interested in moving forward with doing a project on Evans Road on that property, that might be a model that you want to take some time to look at and see if that still makes sense.
Well, I remembered that, and I remember that at one point, the town was going to do something with somebody for a dollar or something. And then something else, then the post-embief ended up there, but there was a price set on it. And then I think the town had to offer it at that price.
I would say, yeah, that was a different process. That was because the GR Hall had been donated to the town, and there were restrictions on the property. It had to be used towards a... I'm trying to remember what the exact wording was. And Rodney, if you got it on the top of your head. But my, if memory serves, it had to be used as a park or memorial or something along those lines. And so the town, to fulfill that donation, that gift bequest, they had to put the property out for sale at, for the value of the property, whatever that assessed value was. Is that about right, Rodney?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's just because of uses and what the people that gave it originally wanted it, yes.
Precisely, yeah.
It's the same, really.
Well, we'd have to look into how the town acquired that property on Evans Road in the first place. There was a deed restriction on the GR Hall property. There may not be one on this property.
Okay. Can you help me with that?
That's up to the Select Board.
Oh, well, yeah. I mean, one, yeah, okay. All right.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Who is that?
Peter LaRoche.
Hi, Peter.
Hard to hear you.
If the town, if we went through with this and we paid full market value, my question would be, would the town be willing to possibly willing to give, you know, the sewer and water hiccup, hitch up to the lower rate? Maybe have the tax bill reduced for like 10 years, as long as it's encumbered for, you know, 10 or 15 years, whatever.
From my perspective, I think that gets us into the weeds pretty deeply. You know, tonight, it sounds like what we're looking for is a, you know, a general feeling from the board as to whether or not we think, you know, use like this on that property is a good idea, and whether we would want to go forward with a process of a hearing or something like that. Does that sound right, Tyler or Bill?
Yeah. See that? I just slid back into the meeting. Yeah, I mean, Pete, to address Peter's question, I would say all options are on the table from this point. I mean, if we work out something that adds 16 units of low-income housing to the town, then it's a good thing. You know, once the proposal goes out, or the, what was it, 4114?
It's 4114A. Yeah.
That was awful close, so.
Pretty good. A lot of ones.
Once we get into that process, you know, proposals are going to come in. And we're going to weigh the best option for the town. Period. Right?
Right. Right. But I think, you know, the, we've all done some work with housing over the last year. And we all recognize the need for affordable workforce housing. And, you know, so having any proposal to look at is really exciting. And so I'm willing for us to kind of see how to go forward.
Did you catch any of that, Tyler?
I missed most of that, yeah. Sorry about that. Lights flickered and I lost my internet there. But it sounds like, sure, this is definitely a good discussion to start. And let's see what we can work with, you know, as a town. And we've considered another project similar where, you know, certain town land could be used, right? So let's, let's think about it. But yeah, no, I don't, I wouldn't make a decision tonight, especially now after missing most of the discussion.
Understandable.
But for Peter, this, I mean, like, yes, the town would consider anything. Of course, we'll consider anything. They're not going to rule out any type of, you know, partnership or whatever, just for the sake of ruling it out.
It'd be good to hear from the public with more information, you know, when they have more information too, right?
Well, I have more information, except that you can't see it. I have maps, graphs, layouts, drawings.
I think, Hope, our process, though, is one we have, what we need to do is decide on the process that we want to kind of go through. If this is, if the public hearing is the way to do this, the 4114A or whatever, you know, that should be a discussion we have, and then we can figure out next steps.
Yeah, I ask a question of Nicole. What is, is that a state thing? What exactly is that? And what does the process entail and what do you need from us to do it?
4114A is a state law, RSA 4114A. And that covers how towns can acquire property and how towns can sell property. So they have to go through a double public hearing process. You have to hold two public hearings. They have to be spaced a certain number of days apart before the Select Board can make any decision about property.
Okay.
And if I could add to that, it also requires a review and input from the Planning Board and the Conservation.
And Conservation, that's correct. Yep. Sorry, I forgot about that part.
We know we have to go before the Planning.
No, it's not just that. They have to weigh in on the project first.
Right.
So is the, is the first part to have a full plan, you know, kind of presented? Or is it just concept? Or what is it that Hope's group would need to bring to us? How complete does it need to be to move a process forward?
That's really going to depend.
What she has is pretty complete. It's just she can't hold it up and have you see it. So what we need to do is figure out a way where Tyler, Karen, and I can all look at it. You know, I haven't laid out somewhere here where we can...
Around a big table, we can all have masks on and stand 6 feet apart. But if you could see everything we've done so far, it would be very clear.
Okay.
Sure. I missed part of that. I heard 16 units, roughly 55,000 per, would, and I don't know what, if I missed, was, is there buy-in from 16 contractors that would work on this for a year without a salary to do this? How does this work?
They would, they would spend as much time as they could while they're still earning their money the rest of the week. Maybe put in three days a week. I've got that all figured out. You know, it's all in the return that any investor or themselves would get. And the idea is that we would end up give having, having some decent, nice housing for 16 people or families. The town would end up starting to get taxes on land that's been sitting idle. And these investors, whether it be the tradespeople, you know, the contractor like Peter, who I assume is still listening up there, would end up owning some if they want and end up having some, an asset as they go forward into retirement. I mean, it's like this win-win-win.
Right. None of that's our problem to deal with.
Right. But it's just to give you an idea, yes.
Yeah.
Got it.
All right. We do have a couple of questions and comments on Facebook. I don't know if you want to take those, Tyler?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Carol Nelson.
I don't, I can't see them, so I'm mature.
Carol Nelson asks, so if there are 10 local builders, then would there be 10 owners? It sounds rather cumbersome.
Yes. Or there's a formula that I figured out that depending upon how many hours of different contractors or trades, you know, we'd need roughly for that many units of those buildings that we have drawings to show you, we would need at least three contractors, one electrician, one heating and plumbing person. What's the other? But...
That would be for their partnership to decide.
Right. So, and then we have, which Tyler, this is an important aspect that came sort of along our last six to seven months of working on this. We have two very important investors who are interested in this, who already own or need more affordable housing. So it could be two, it could be part and part.
Okay.
And also, if I might add, the units are around 600, 620 square feet.
Right.
They're smalls to be affordable.
And which will help to keep them affordable. That's also a legal question. If we get further than this, we'll have to get a lawyer and work out all the, you know, after Nicole gets past, or, you know, we get past the, or whatever it was. We know that there's a lot of other work to be done. But we've worked out roughly how, how they can stay affordable so that people don't, the owners don't flip them, you know, all those kinds of issues we've worked into. Am I missing anything, Peter?
I think you got it all.
Okay. Okay. Hold on. Bill Kennedy asks if Evans Flat Properties in the greater downtown Tiff District. It's a good question. I'm not entirely sure. We'd have to look that one up.
No.
No, it's not, okay.
Yes, the, yes, the answer is no.
No, okay.
Don't be confusing.
The.
Affirmative, that answer is.
Stephen Graves comments, not sure how this brings us more affordable apartments near the downtown. It is more or less in our downtown area. It's, the land is located off of Evans Road, which is right off of Elm Street. If you were to drive down Elm Street, you'd see the entrance of the road right next to Scott Farrar.
And Hope, you said $750 to $850 a month is the projected.
Yes.
Yep.
I mean, if we go that route, I mean, whatever move that we've just discussed amongst ourselves so far will be new housing.
Right.
And so that's pretty good. And. And it's definitely within the affordable rental range.
It is.
Carol Nelson. I'm sorry.
Does that answer that person's question?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah. Carol Nelson asked if you're referring to the area where the town puts the overflow of snow in the winter.
No.
It is that, yes, it is. It is that land. At the end of Evans Road.
Right, once we, once highway runs out of room on the, where the highway garage is, then they use that area off of Evans Road. Has the snow dump.
And up until fairly recently, the town used to dump pipes and all kinds of stuff down there, but it's all cleaned up now.
Most of that material was used on the Union Street projects.
Oh, okay.
Where would the snow go?
We're not having that anymore.
Oh.
We decided that while you were, while you were disconnected, it's not going to be anymore. One of our cost-saving measures.
If, if the select board were to decide to do something with this parcel, we could certainly find other town land to, to store snow on. It wouldn't be that, that difficult. Might not be as convenient to the downtown, but.
Right, and just to be clear, everybody that's worked on this are volunteers. No one has a vested interest in this.
Nope.
Right, because we will get those questions, who's going to benefit from this financially and that sort of thing, so.
Right, no, so far, I want to say Sharon Myhan has helped John Catlin and Peter LaRoche and Beltface.
Right.
Sasha Doobie's asked, what is the deal with the abandoned building on Elm Street in 101? Why is it just rotting? The property owners have chosen not to do anything with the building. And I believe that's all the questions.
All right, well, interesting proposal and certainly a lot to think about and discuss. And, and we'll look forward to setting up something where we can view it and properly discuss it, right, as a board and town administration.
Okay, so I, I don't need to do anything yet until I hear from you guys and just bring in, spread it all out.
Thank you very much for your consideration. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for the work you put into this. This is, this is a good step forward if, if something can work out, so, yeah, thanks.
All right, welcome very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chief Walker.
Let me unmute here. So thank you for inviting me back, I guess. Before we talk about COVID, just a quick little update. Tropical Storm ESEES, I think I pronounced that correctly. Is headed our way overnight tonight. Six o'clock, there's actually an updated conference call, but the, the, the primary change of the last few days is the track has shifted further west. At least last I heard it was, which for us means less rain, but a little more wind. So they are predicting some 25 to 35 mile an hour winds, maybe gusts somewhere in the 40 to 50 mile an hour range. And the rain is still around two or three inches and it should be out of here and sunny by tomorrow. So internally.
Use the current radar?
There you go. Um.
Where are that little arrow, right?
Yeah, we're right there with the little.
Storm is like just about past us already.
Yeah, so the, um. So internally, you know, we have, we have sort of prep for in terms of DPW, pollution, fire. So, you know, if, if nothing else, it was good practice early in the season. To get ready and start, you know, talking about some of the things that we look at from a community when it comes to these tropical storm events. So now back to COVID. Couple, a couple of things, so. You know, we've been fortunate in, as I said before, in the southwestern corner of the state to not be super impacted by coronavirus. And, and COVID-19. You know, to date, the town of Peterborough has had a total of 18 residents that have tested positive and identified as residents of the town of Peterborough. At the time of testing, which although it is higher than, you know, some of our surrounding communities in total number, when you look at the rate, it's not a bad rate. In there, again, zero would be better, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying that it's necessarily acceptable or good, but it's, it's not super high. Last week in the Daily Dispatch, one of the things that I spoke about and talked about. Was the new portal that the state has available for. To be able to see what the local numbers are and so forth. And I don't know, I can't seem to share. I know I was out for a second, is that?
I can, there you go.
All right, so let me here, can folks see my screen?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Wait, I have to click the little share button, there we go. All right, so if folks can see, if you go to, we back up here, I apologize. So if you go to the state's COVID page, which you can just Google, New Hampshire COVID data or newhampshire.gov/COVID19. If you click on the COVID-19 summary dashboard. It brings you up here, and sort of the two most interesting maps, and a lot of great statistics on your total curve. And risk are here, but two maps that are interesting. The first one is map of cumulative positive cases. And you can click on any town in the state. Here, I'll grab Peterborough. And you can look, so in Peterborough, we've had a total of 18 positive cases since they started this back in March. The other one, which is actually a little more valuable, if you will, in terms of showing what's going on presently. Is map of current positive cases. So if you look at the map of current positive cases and come down here, again, going back to Peterborough where we are. We have less than four cases. And the total number, the state suppression, the total number is less than four. But if you look around the state, I mean, if you were to look at it from the beginning, it looks like, you know, there's, there's a lot going on. We, like I said, we've been fortunate that the case, the number of cases has gone down. Like I said, in town here and all the towns around us. We have very few cases, you know, globally as we're going through there, looking at that. So folks can go and look on that and pull that data for any community across the state. And a lot of other states have similar data for that. I know one of the, one of the things to discuss is sort of the idea of masks and masking. So Manana Community Hospital is partnering with, starting with the town of Peterborough and we're working up through other towns and program that's. Co-sponsored with the New Hampshire Hospital Association called MASCUP. So what Manana Community Hospital is doing is assisting the communities with a lot of outreach information. I know that the folks here in the town of Peterborough, some volunteers through the Economic Development Authority. Have been working directly with business owners to get this marketing material out. It includes table stands, includes clings for windows, posters for windows. Reminding folks that really wearing masks, washing your hands and social distancing are the best things. Particularly Nicole's going to bring that up. So there we are. So this is the mask, it's the, excuse me, the poster. Co-branded with the Manana Community Hospital and the town of Peterborough. One of the things that went on with this also was they had a, the Graham and Adnok Rotary Club sponsored a MASCUP event where they gave. But I don't have the number. I know they had over 2,000 cloth masks to give out. Free to residents in the area. So they had that. And then there's also, there's another set of posters that go along with the idea of masking up and working. I don't know, Karen, from the perspective of our EDA, how many, how many folks, I know that the, quite a few members jumped right on board with going and distributing that material.
Yeah, I really want to give a shout out to the members of the EDA who could do that. So Bill Kennedy and Jean Deitch and Megan Swoko and James Kelly. I think that was the list and, and I was out there too. And we, they each took a big chunk. And so we have about 100 businesses that we are in the process of visiting, stopping by to make sure that they have posters. A lot of them, you know, just in the course of going out the other day. What I noticed is that they already have signs in the window. They already have mask, big mask signs that signs are, masks are required. So I was really happy to see that. You know, it looks like our businesses have, have already done a lot of this good work. And so that was really important to see. And I know that the team is finishing up this week with the rest of the posters. So if any businesses have not seen one of us yet and would like to get your hands on the materials. You can just send an email to me at community@peterboroughnh.gov. And I'll be sure to get in touch.
So that, so that leads back to sort of this discussion about masks. In, if you want to look at something for mandatory use of masks. You know, there is the, there is the, the program we're doing here, the MASCUP in conjunction with Manana Community Hospital. The governor's reopening orders, you know, cover the wearing of masks in most of your businesses, whether it's retail, restaurant. You know, beauty, healthcare, all those avenues have it covered. Nashua very early on did a local ordinance for masks that was challenged. The challenge was thrown out, or I should say the ordinance was upheld by the courts. Since then, a number of municipalities, the list that I had today through. Part of Public Health, the ones they're aware of, Portsmouth, Plymouth, Infield, Keene, Lebanon, Hanover and Durham. Are also looking at mask ordinance decision. There may be others too, but those are the ones that we're aware of. And Keene sort of being the closest to us as we go forward. So in, in looking at a couple of the issues that came up with Keene. If you look at Keene's website, they have available the packet that went out to the members of their Planning, Licensing and Development Committee. It was on their agenda for their meeting on July 29th. And they looked at this as, and brought it up and went through, went through the process. And internally, as we looked at it and also looking and echoing some of the things that came out of Keene's. Two things that came out really were issues around enforcement. And, you know, Chief Steve Russo from the Keene Police Department, you know, was asked to draft a memo. You know, which he talks about, you know, the, the difficulty of the ordinance. Not from the fact that, you know, there is a lot of public discontent with it. You look nationally. You know, about the, the level of people that are saying, you know, it's an overreach, you shouldn't have to wear it. To the fact that, you know, any of the, any of the guidance you look at, whether it's CDC or state guidance. Does provide for certain individuals, particularly those with some health issues are exempt. So, you know, getting into the, how do you enforce this? How does this work? Do, you know, should this person wear a mask, not wear a mask? And looking at this and going forward, you know, with that. I mean, I think that, you know, to, to quote Chief Russo for the memo, and again, this memo was on Keene's website and looking at it. You know, given public sentiment on both sides of the face covering issue. Any enforcement, especially strict enforcement, may very well lead to undesirable consequences and public perceptions embracing a lack of public trust. I mean, going forward with that. You know, I know from our perspective here in town. We have been very fortunate in, with, I think, the level of responsibility, if you will, with our businesses. With the folks attending our businesses and our restaurants, the folks that are in our public spaces. You know, Karen hinted to that somewhat with her discussion about the number of businesses that already have signs up and, and are enforcing that. We, we've had very few complaints, or I should really say very few questions from the public around, you know, the, the issue of masks and getting there. So I don't, you know, I, again, I don't know from perspective, you know, there are half a dozen communities in the state. If you look at that list, we'd be the smallest community looking at this from that list and sort of where they are. I can see Karen looks like she's chomping at the bit to throw something in there.
I want to just, just say something about the towns that are on the list, Ed. And that is that they all have universities or colleges and they all have students coming back this month to campus. And so it makes a lot of sense for those, those particular communities in the state to have an ordinance. Because students are coming back from all over the country. So that makes a lot of sense to me. You know, it's a, and I just want to, I'll go on record as saying, I think, you know, unless, unless we have a statewide mask ordinance. It's really difficult for town to town to, to create, you know, an ordinance and enforce it. And try and get, you know, people will move, people move from wherever they are town to town, right? It's just difficult. So I think. You know, if people, and I've heard from people, you know, why hasn't the town done something? And I would say, if you want masks to be required, then the pressure needs to be on the state. To create an ordinance, make it required in the state. And then we can certainly go along with that and enforce it. But I just think it's, it's really tricky town to town to try and make this work, especially if we're doing well. Then people would argue on the other side saying, well, but we're doing well, so why do we need to do that? And I, it's really tricky.
Good point. Bill, you want to add something?
Yeah, I think that the best way for any sort of enforcement is on the individual level. I mean, it's got to be up to each and every person to wear a mask when you're in public. And if, in all those places where they have talked about the ordinance, and particularly the one I've read the most about, probably Keene, because it's closest. But they said that anyone, if a police officer approaches somebody that doesn't have a mask on. They can say, I have a health reason. And the officer can't then ask what that health reason is. So anybody that, you know, is not going to wear a mask anywhere is going to use that. And all we've done is written a piece of paper that mandates that you wear a mask, but anybody that doesn't want to has a way out of. What's the activity with the fire department going by the street here?
Oh, we got a bunch of trees and wires now, nothing serious.
At least not on your road, that's good.
At least you lose, unless you lose power or internet.
I think we just, I, I mean, it seems like to me, or locally, that, I mean, I, it's very rare that I catch anybody somewhere without a mask on. And I'm not about to ask any about, anybody about it. And I certainly wouldn't want to be in that position if I were a cop or, I mean, who does that fall on? It's, it really, it's got to be down to personal responsibility. Everybody has to do it on their own. And if you're concerned about being somewhere where somebody doesn't have a mask on, you obviously will.
Yeah, Chief.
Yes.
So, um, I mean, we, we have you, our health officer who's guiding this and has been right out in front of it. And people, you know, they've been listening to you and the Office of Community Development has been, you know, working with businesses. So we, people are being responsible in our town. So we're, you know, select board member wearing is in an office alone.
Right, I'm right here in this meeting. I'm the only one in this meeting wearing a mask right now.
Right, so I, you know, we're, we're going about it the best we can and I think we're, we're fortunate to have as few cases as we do. Karen?
A question for Ed, because there, I saw today someone had a question about having been in one of the stores. And a chain, that the chain had determined that masks were required. And yet shoppers were coming in and not wearing a mask. And when a person complained to management, their excuse was that it's not enforceable because it's not a statewide mandate. So what's your answer to that? And what should people do if that's what they're encountering? I mean, is there recourse? Is there, would you go in and speak with the manager or something? Or, or what do you think we ought to do about stuff like that?
I mean, we certainly can. The mandate is not for customers. The mandate through the governor's reopening guidance is, talks about store employees. I really think it does come down to having, having a conversation with that and going back to one of the problems. And, you know, you know, Bill highlighted something, the city manager, Elizabeth Dragon, in, you know, Keene brought up. Is the issues with the enforcement of that. And as you, you know, moving from community to community and keeping people informed and looking at that. You know, already several of our larger stores in town here do have chain-wide policies requiring the use of masks. But again, it is very difficult and I'm sure everybody has had an opportunity through, whether it's the nightly news or social media. To see some of the, you know, pretty horrific interactions that have gone on between individuals who choose not to wear masks. And believe they're exercising an ordained right compared to the. and believe they're exercising an ordained right compared to those folks that, you know, are trying to enforce that, whether it be a, you know, a clerk or an, or a manager in an establishment. So I think for, for folks, if they have issues around store employees, people that have direct customer contact in restaurants that are not wearing masks, let myself know or let Chief Gennaro through the police department know. We do have, we've, we've developed a formal process for investigating those complaints and looking at those. And then there is guidance through the Department of Public Health, as well as the Attorney General's Office, on how the community follows up with that and enforces that. And when we go, you know, go beyond that, if it is a question to the public, I think this is really where we need to rely on ourselves and those people that are committed to the mask wearing to make sure the signs are out there, make sure there is an element of just trying to educate folks. And if, you know, and I think it was Bill mentioned, if you are in a situation where there are people that, you know, aren't wearing masks or you feel are placing you in an unsafe situation, you know, move away from them. I mean, you know, if you're driving down the road and you see a driver who's acting erratically, you pull over and let them pass. You know, I think unfortunately that there's some point where if you can't control the behavior of that individual, then you need to take your own actions to, to try to protect yourself around whatever is going on. That may not be the best answer or the answer necessarily people want. But unfortunately, we might, we might be there with a lot of this stuff.
That's a good answer though, Ed. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's a good answer. All right. Well, I think we've covered it. You think?
I think so.
Yeah. All right. Well, thanks again, Chief.
I believe all the questions that have been asked on Facebook have already been addressed, so.
Great. Thank you.
Great. And just a reminder, the town of Peterborough has a leash law. With the wind picking up, make sure your dogs are leashed this evening. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. The 2020 assessment to sales ratio and proposal for partial statistical update. Rodney, Mary Beth Walker has put together a letter for us and proposal. And you guys have discussed it at town administration?
Yes, myself, Nicole and Leo have talked about it. Nicole, can you give us an update?
Sure. So we did talk about this. We have been seeing, as Mary Beth pointed out in her memo, that the, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit of feedback. Bill, can you turn down the speaker a little bit? Sorry.
How about that?
More cowbell.
I think that, that's better. Thank you.
The sirens in the background.
Just when I talk, for whatever reason, it's, I think my microphone's picking it up a little bit. The June 20th tax receipts did really well this year. So just to keep in mind that one of the things I wanted to bring up tonight was that tax bills came in and tax bills came in at 94, we have a 94% correction, collection rate. So we've done very well this year. One of the things that Mary Beth was noting, however, was that the, the sales that we've had have been significantly higher than the assessed value of the property, enough so that she's, was a bit concerned about the equalized ratio, which is the percentage that gets, that's gets applied to our assessments. As we were discussing though, like Rodney said, with Leo, myself and Rodney, Leo pointed out that the unit sales are down, that there have been far fewer homes on the market, which, you know, Rodney attributes to the COVID cloud. Essentially, the COVID-19 has really put a damper on people wanting to to move. They're, they really want to stay in place, stay in Peterborough. However, what sales are have been, have definitely been above assessments. Those that are out on the market are getting snapped up very quickly, mostly by out of state buyers. And Leo's thought that this has, that really what we should do is nothing with the assessments for the time being. Leave the, the, the assessments where they are, hold off on doing a statistical update. It's something that we could revisit next year if we see more sales. But right now, the sales really are are very few and far between and really just wasn't enough to to really be considered a true pattern.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, that, that does seem fair and certainly, but we also don't want to get caught off, caught off guard like, like back in 2018 where we did the entire town revaluation and and people were, you know, caught off guard really. Because it could, it had been such a time since their last, since the last revaluation and things jumped so much. So that's, that's the trade off. Do you, do you creep it up a little bit at a time or, or wait? But it's understandable if the, if the data isn't there to to say it's worth doing the rebound now.
Yeah, and I don't think we, we really know what, how long this COVID cloud, if you will, is that what you called it, Rodney? COVID, COVID cloud. We don't really know how long this is going to last and what the effects of that will be longer term. So I think it really makes sense to wait and see, to collect the data and see what we've got.
Sure. So do we need to make a motion or just a general agreement as to do nothing?
I think the general agreement's sufficient.
Are we?
Did you have anything on that?
Motion to do nothing.
So let it be written, so let it not be done. All right. Well, that sounds good.
Okay.
I agree with that from a real estate, you know, that's what I do for work tip. So I agree with that completely to hold off.
All right. Then we'll table that one. Great. Thanks, thanks to Mary Beth for doing that work and keeping us surprised of what's happening. Next up, we have authority to borrow for publicly owned systems. This would be the Cold Stone Springs water source. Rodney, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Certainly. The DES State Revolving Fund is a, is a funding mechanism that many, many communities and cities use. We have been offered from the State Revolving Fund, a loan of $4.047 million, the amount of money that was authorized at our town meeting for the Cold Stone Springs project. The interest rate presently on that loan would be 1.296 for a 20-year timeframe. That offer also comes with a 10% principal forgiveness offer from DES. But that means at the time of the final bond number, 10% of what we borrow will be forgiven. So if we were to borrow 4 million at the time of of putting the bond in place, we would only be borrowing 3.6 million. It's an excellent offer. It's better than what we received from USDA Rural Development. I'm recommending that we go forward with it. But to do that, section of Form 2A, authority to borrow, particularly section one, needs to be adopted by the board.
Okay, sorry, you said 1.29% interest rate?
Yes.
That's not bad, right?
That's, I think, like at the end of it, that'll be the, like, payment wise. It's, I mean, it's, it's like the equivalent of a $1 million loan payment wise was six months ago.
Right.
Months ago.
Pretty much.
It's incredible.
Great. All right. Well.
Read that number one.
I'll make the motion, therefore be resolved by this Peterborough Select Board, the governing body of said applicant, as follows, that the person holding the position of town administrator currently held by Rodney Bartlett is hereby designated as the authorized representative of the applicant for the purpose of filing an application for a loan in accordance with the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter furnishing such information, data, dispersments and documents pertaining to the applicant or loan as may be required, and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the applicant in connection with this application. And if such loan be made, is the designated authorized representative of the applicant responsible for furnishing such information, data and documents pertaining to dispersments for the loan.
Motion seconded.
All right. Any further discussion? This is good deal not to pass up. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Tyler.
Hi, Bill.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thanks Rodney. Good work on that.
And just as a follow up note, we do have another meeting with the Drinking Water Groundwater Trust Fund Commission on August 10th. Tana Chaffrey and John Frederick and I will be presenting our final funding scenario to the Trust Fund Commission and asking for all the remaining funding to make the project go forward. So I'll be updating everyone on the 10th as to where we stand with our final funding package.
That's great. It's good news. It's good that the townspeople trusted town administration to get this project going. And it's an important one for the town. We desperately, well, we will need that water someday.
So when you estimated that, what was the estimated interest rate?
When we estimated it and actually looked at what our principal and interest payments would, would be, our original estimate was at 4%. And we may have downgraded it to 2.5. But my recollection says we went no lower than 3% in our estimates.
That's what I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's. And then is it a okay time if we're talking about good news and the interest rate thing to talk about the bridge and library loan and interest rate?
I believe those numbers were at 1.3%.
1.3, 1.37. And they were, they were, we budgeted the, the budget for both of those things in the neighborhood of four and a quarter percent. So essentially on those two loans saving like, what was, what were we talking about, like 130, 140,000 dollars a year? Cheaper?
Yes.
Loan payments, that's just on payment. And they're 15 years instead of 20. That's, that's Leo Smith, ladies and gentlemen, the magic of Leo Smith.
We'll put together a compilation of all our updated numbers after we get final approval on our funding on Monday, August 10th.
Yep. Looks like Tyler and Karen might have lost power or something because they're both.
Yeah, I think our generators kicked on, so we may be done for the night.
Well, how do we adjourn the meeting? Looks like I'm in charge, everybody. Motion to adjourn? Yes. Second. Third, all in favor? Have a good night, everybody.
Tropical storm wins.
Yeah.